Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Westminster Select Board Meeting.
All calls to Westminster's Select Board to order on Wednesday, November 8th, 2023, 6:31. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Um.
Errors and omissions?
Yes, and Madam Chair, I would like to add a notice by the Vermont State Ethics Commission for a matter of public disclosure for the both, every member of executive, of municipal government, sorry, and for all the people, all the citizens of Westminster who are eligible to participate in this.
Okay. Would you like that?
Um, we have an executive session.
I do not know of any reason that you do have one at this time.
So since, since we're not having executive session, Madam Chair, can we strike executive session and move that to H?
Sure.
Thank you.
So we're going to strike executive session and we're going to put Vermont State Ethics Commission in as H. Okay.
And errors and omissions?
Yeah.
By errors and omissions. Errors and omissions. Okay, thank you.
Perfect. All right, except, anything else? All right, acceptance of minutes October 25th, 2023.
Oh, no. So move.
Do you want a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the minutes of October 25th, 2023. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Would you, could I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Would you rather I do it as a draft and have everyone look at it as than the way we're doing it? Would you rather have it just be a draft paper? Is that, would that be something that you would think about or, and then have everybody take a look, or you just want to continue to do it the way we're doing it?
I don't have a preference.
Just, you can think about it.
What's easy for you?
As long as you, as long as you don't yell.
If you have a question, you may get an answer quicker.
Right, if you, if you send it to everybody.
Okay.
But you may also get four or five answers back that aren't the same. I don't, I don't have a preference.
Whatever works for you, Millie.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Communications and public comments. On the exit.
Would you want to, no, I'm later on in the agenda.
She, she's an agenda item.
Okay, I'm a comment. So, um, I'm pretty, Sarah Waldo, from Western School West, and I'm kind of excited that you might have a town manager very soon, so that's great news. And, um, you know, so I'm very pleased that you're open to having a welcome for this new town manager, if he is the town manager. And, um, I would encourage you to involve the community in organizing this. It's really my interest to have more engagement in the town and county politics. So with this new person coming on to give it some energy and, and welcome people into what the Select Board does and what town government is, um, so, um, that would be a suggestion. And I also have another suggestion that I, Select Board, um, in the Gazette, um, every month, um, various town organizations like Fire and Rescue and, and the Highway Department have an article about what's been going on. And I would encourage the Select Board to do the same thing, to pick something of interest or something important in town, not, maybe not every month, but just so people can know about what's going on in town. You know, I don't think a lot of people go onto the website to read the minutes. You know, they're all broad and, you know.
I can spice them up.
They're just as they should be, very factual and to the point.
But not interesting.
So very.
No, that was a nice way to say it.
But, you know, everybody reads the Gazette, so people can read about this town organization, the Select Board, and know what's going on with the county manager with the Select Board. So those are my two comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I'm your service to town. I had thought about the Gazette article multiple times and it, my follow through has not been there, so I will admit.
A couple of managers, oh, sorry. No, no, I was just going to say that I agree, but I was thinking it should be from the desk of the town manager.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Two town managers ago.
He did do that.
And he would do that. It was kind of dry. Without kind of specifics, it was just very basic, but we can talk to the new fellow and.
Has already, he's interested in doing something, so great. I would do, do, I would.
That leaves me?
That leaves it to you, sir.
Well, I appreciate this, please, I do apologize, I will keep this no longer than five minutes. So on March 10th this year, this is my, I've had the privilege of serving three terms, a two-year term, uh, as a select man for the Town of Westminster. And on March 10th, 2023, I had announced to as many people as I thought I knew that I would not be seeking another term. And I wanted to make that official tonight and say hello, excuse me, say thank you to everybody, all the people I've served with on this board, all the people I've served with on prior boards, Millie Barry for her, uh, just exceptional, um, work and commitment, Allison Bigwood for stepping in, Chip Willis for being there for us this year during transition, and thanks for being here tonight, Charles Lawrence and everyone on the crew who have done their very best, a very special thing to my friend, Jason Curry, I think we've been, did a lot, and I really appreciate that, and everyone else who, who came before, before me. Coming from New Jersey, this has been a real privilege for me. You know, I'm a history, educated person in history, political science, um, and fact is participated in actual representative government is an extraordinary thing, and especially in this day and age. And I felt compelled after speaking to some people that maybe they didn't know that I had chose to do that. So, and I did want to clarify something, uh, because people had come up to me, not once, not ever, had I ever said that I thought that the codification of term limit should be something that's a rule or something that, something should be adopted. What I did say was that I was, I think it's great to follow the tradition set down by George Washington, uh, to follow that rule, and, um, it's a good rule. And, um, change, I can attest to, because when you look at all those wonderful people that are up here today, I'm the oldest one in here after six years. We have had a complete turnover, and we also have something called the Chair. The Chair now rotates every year, hopefully that will continue. And, um, I'm also, and lastly, I just wanted to say, we have accomplished a lot. It's not always what people think, but when you get into the role, um, I would encourage anyone now, because there's four months to go, who wishes to serve, I couldn't recommend highly, to come in and serve. Change is a good thing, and having different people in the role is also a good thing. And, um, I'm proud of a couple of things, and then I'm going to shut up. I'm going to talk later about the Ethics Committee, Vermont State Ethics Commission. When they began looking at the Ethics Commission, um, believe it or not, the Center for Public Integrity several years ago found that Vermont was one of four states that did not have an ethics rule, and we received an F in Ethics, failure. And the commission now established is working to, uh, hopefully redress some of that. And I'm very proud of some of the things we accomplished all as a group, uh, and as a team. And one of them was the restoration of these, of the conflict of interest. And, um, with respect, uh, when things have been contentious up here, I can tell you that everyone I've served with has always been professional, respectful of one another, and had the town's best interests in heart. And we don't always get to say this, um, to everybody, but I really, again, coming from New Jersey, never thought I'd have a chance to sit and actually exercise, uh, real representative government, because I don't think if I was down there, we would have gotten that opportunity. So I wanted to say thank you to everybody, also in Town Hall as well, if I missed anybody. And the seat that was my privilege to have, I think a little too long, I should have only done two terms, uh, is now open, and folks who wish to, to, to seek, um, to be a part of our government, um, should do so, and I highly encourage them. And again, I thank you all for this indulgence, and I thank you all for all your partnership, and I wish everyone the best of luck, and I'm sure I'll see you around.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all, Madam Chair, I got it in four and a half minutes.
Good job.
I can create through that.
Any other communications and public comments?
Just one relaying from our town moderator, that as we start budget and we start, um, the new town manager, he would like to attend meetings that are relevant where he can, as we start talking about budget items and, and basically town meeting preparation as he is the town moderator, some data.
Okay. Any other communications and public comments? All right, moving on to financial discussion. Go, Chair.
Go, Chair. So, um, dumped out somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 cities and had them emailed to you all for the encouragement of reviewing them, to bring forth any questions you may have. There is nothing remarkable about our financial condition or your financial condition in Westminster. The first page that has the listing of the due to and froms, that's a common question, how much do we have available in all of our different reserves? That singular page gives you the answer to that question?
That's, that's on the first page of the somewhat smaller stack?
That is a page that at the top reads, uh, federal ledger, year period five, and it lists a bunch of accounts that just say due to and from, and each fund is named, page one of one. And the intention there, from accounting standpoint, they have to sum to zero, somebody is owed, someone else has to claim their owed. That is not, when you look at the top one that says general fund, a negative $2,075,009159, that doesn't mean you're out of money. That just means of the 2.7 million you have in the checkbook, 2.075 million of it is owed to other funds. But you've got 2.7 in your checkbook today, which is the top line of the next page. Like I said, there's nothing remarkable about any of these financials. You are, if you will, 33% through the year, and some of the budget line items are 50% or more, because they only get billed once a year, or in some cases twice a year, and others are on track. Again, nothing remarkable.
Steve, can you alert us to anything, um, as we approach the end of the year, that is a fund which, uh, we had intended to use or had budgeted to use, and we've forgotten to neglect it to do what?
Neglected to do something.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, some of these do represent tasks to be done, um, uh, whether they're bridge or they're a, um, community development or something. Is, is there, is there something that stands out here as, oops, we forgot to do something?
So, if I will, I happened to catch only a brief about the roof on this building, 25 hour box or something like that, and the motion was made to take it out of contingency. You have a contingency fund of $150,000, which we replenished from FEMA money, but I don't think that was necessary, you already voted to do it, and that was because in the general fund, you have building maintenance of $20,000 already there, which during budgeting, we talked about painting one side of this building.
Sorry.
Yep.
I don't think we voted to pay for the roof out of the contingency fund, voted to pay for the repairs to.
Something else?
Sorry, the roof.
Yes, to the full work, full work effort.
Yes, thank you.
By the emergency contingency fund.
So, yes.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's the main.
If it came out of the contingency fund, it wasn't meant to.
Yeah.
So anyway.
So the, those are examples of, with the broader picture of the financials, a motion would be made to use what you have, and in terms of your highway, you have money.
Yeah.
And you have even more. Other features, the state of Vermont normally distributes state aid to highways on a quarterly basis. They have given you all four quarters for the fiscal year upfront through October 31st, and if I'm not mistaken, they may even give you an additional sum of money towards state aid to highways. All of this relates to what happened in July, when the state was trying to help towns with cash flow, and there were still communities who are flat out out of money. You're not one of them.
Do you happen to know if that includes grant? Money's.
About point base?
For the full.
No, I haven't seen anything from that.
Okay, all right.
We did get an additional 32 or 39,000 in FEMA money came in, so, um, and within this fiscal year, we had to expense 9,300 for the cove right up by the cemetery. And so you still have 32 in FEMA that we can move and use.
What was that, what was that?
The 9,300?
No, the 30 something, was that still from three years ago?
That's still, well, two years ago.
The FEMA event is from two years ago, yes.
And so.
I think that's done now.
Do we have any outstanding FEMA projects left?
Yes, yes.
Whoever's walking in.
It's an administrative project.
Or they can't, they closed it like this.
It's, um.
About 50 grand now.
That's what the estimate was, based upon mileage, time people have spent, meetings, time people have spent, like filing paperwork and that sort of thing.
But the, so that was home roads projects.
So the road projects are done.
That's straight, that's figured out and done.
Yeah, road projects are done.
For that event from two years ago.
Correct.
So now it's just figuring out the administrative fees.
In terms of, of the, looking at these numbers, uh, the balance sheets are simple, we are on a modified cash basis, meaning we only recognize a liability when we get the money and it's not ours. But otherwise, everything is recorded as a cash event in this town by choice. And so as a result, balance sheets quite simple, what you have are assets, what you owe are liabilities, what you worth is fund balance. The details of what backs up the current year fund balance is revenues, less expenditures in the budget status report, that's the 32 pages, it followed all of the balance sheets. And again, nothing remarkable about any of this. We did before last fiscal year, close a few bank accounts and consolidate into one checkbook. That has reaped us somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 times more interest, um, even though all we did was go to 1.5%, because everything was under 2.01, 2.015%. So we weren't making anything, almost, uh, probably $700,000 sitting over there in these special reserves.
Can I just put flesh on the ARPA number?
Yes.
For 89,000, that's what is left.
Left, left.
Does that include commitments that we've made but not paid for yet?
I don't know any, I don't know about any of those.
I don't know if there is.
So, one of the ways.
So I thought that number was closer to recent.
I think this is right, because I think the only commitments the board has made that haven't been paid yet.
I can't remember the last one.
I think they did the church, though, were you here for the church?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That was done.
Yeah, that's done.
Since we're uncertain, uh, save time, is there a way we can find out exactly what we got, uh, or what the commitment is?
In terms of cash, that's what.
Well, no, well, we're committed to make sure this is the right number.
That, that would require going back through minute meetings of what you committed to that hasn't yet been paid for, and either somebody has that in wrote or kind of read minutes.
Okay, because there was a handful of meetings, but that number was in the 340,000.
Very possible, so we should get the right number, just curious, we should get the right number.
On the reappraisal fund, of course, we're due to do an reappraisal, um, that's 202, that clearly represents an action item that we need to do, um, and that's money sitting there to be used for reappraisal.
Yes, and specifically.
Yeah.
That is under the discretion of the board for contracting, um, and you have that in reserve to pay those bills.
Just quickly while we're on the subject, and did we say we were going to bid that out or not?
Or?
Or to reappraise the, uh?
Yes, if the listers were supposed to come to us.
No, we did.
They were going to send out a letter and collect bids, and they were going to make a recommendation, but we did not do that.
And it was, by the time everything was all said and done, it'd be like 25 before it was actually done.
But Steve, you, forgive me if you want, this is an action item, I get the impression you want to act on soon.
I, I, I think we want to do an appraisal as soon as we have the information. Okay, I mean, we want to, we have the money, hopefully enough, um, and we have a job to do, uh, if we appropriate to get it done, and it's, we're required to get it done as well, so we, we get to get it done at some point.
Well, the issue, the issue was, there's only so many companies to do it.
Yeah.
And then you're going to have to get in line.
And, 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 and that's true, and we may, we may accept a bid from a company and they may say, fine, we'll do it in 2025. But at least we want to be in the line.
Yes, no, I agree.
We're not quite in the line at this point.
Will there be a time when we will debate this as to cost and expectancy?
I thought let's just bring it to us.
Let's, let's just bring it to us, and we say, well, well, that's a good idea, and there's your three bids, and we.
Very good.
And I know they had reached out to some company, but I don't know, where is that?
But maybe we need to prod the listers to get that to us, because it's, it's a reminder to me that that's a job, big job, contentious job, that actually needs to get done.
Yeah.
And I think you'll find that for the, a full-time town manager coming on board, these types of things are going to be drawn to the eye and say, oh, the listers, I need to check with them again, check with them again. So there's, if you will, not a prodding, but an inquiry. Do you need help with this? Do you need help writing an RFP?
It's actually doing, doing its job.
Yeah.
Or.
The, the hard and the difficult part, um, in our type of representative government is that all the power is linear, there's not a hierarchy. Listers are elected, the manager can assist but cannot direct.
Well, so.
Been there, done that. Any, any others as you look down through, um, you, the bridge fund we've talked about, you contribute 15,000 a year, but you know, you've got the 121 bridge you're going to be responsible for.
Town garage.
And a couple others.
Town garage?
Huh?
Town garage.
Town garage, 63,000 sitting in the town garage, we're buying a pay door.
I don't know, but it's.
So.
That's, that's the normal.
And as you were asking about ARPA. You do have a time constraint on ARPA to make.
Yes.
And it's this time of year and next year.
Yes.
You know, September, October, that that report's got to be submitted, you've got to have said, this is what we're doing in, in my 2026, actually having spent it.
Yes.
So, you know, to me, that's a time is the essence, to be buttoning that thing. There are some others out there that are minimal amounts of money, the Emergency Management Fund was originally put together during the Vermont Yankee years, got seven grand in it. Could that be, does that still need to be, who's going to be our Emergency Management Director? And does that position need to have a trailer and supplies ready, or is there something to use that for? Those are, there's a lot of those type of funds just sitting out there, the Tricentennial Committee with 250 bucks. Did you already have that? Have you had that and it's over? The Recreation Committee's got a thousand bucks. So these are all things that have developed over the years, and their purpose may have to exist, and so each of those can be looked at. And a good time to deal with that is before you get to a fiscal year end, so you can take action on it, and it simplifies the audit.
So if the Rec Committee is intending to put up a giosk at the swimming hole, um, then they, you know, as they did it, used it up and smoothed out the audit process?
Well, just, it's, it's, it's an accounting function that keeps saying, began with, ended with, let change, goose egg, meaning we got it, we've done nothing, we've done nothing, we've done nothing. And so if there's.
But a goose egg can represent the work done.
No, that would be the remaining. The change in goose egg would be minus a thousand, carry forward zero, that's what I would think.
Carry forward zero means.
You've done.
Done.
You've done.
Certainly, except what you want to be done, we want to use that ARPA money, we want to.
Yes.
To not have money just hanging for you to, for you to watch, but do nothing.
Right, well, and if the, if there was an intent, then getting those intentions fulfilled.
Yeah.
Maybe the luminaires could use the activities money? Or at least. Well, it seems to be there's a question, right?
What's it called?
Activities.
So you do have in your regular general fund budget, a thousand dollar line item labeled, I think, as Rec Committee? And I don't know, since I've been involved here, that I've seen anything spent out of that.
Two different things, the Rec, Rec Committee is like the swimming hole, water group, I think.
It's like that.
Activities, used to be fairly active, it was like during Kelton, then a couple of different people, I don't know.
Dempsey Potter.
Yeah, I don't know if they do.
I don't think they've met since COVID.
Is it one of these things here? I don't see it. I'll call that.
So, that's, that's partly why the encouragement was, we drew these, and if you're not sure what it is, then we need to find out either as a group or have somebody research, this is, this was established when and what, and is it purpose even still needed? If it was established by the voters, it has to be closed by the voters. Most of these probably established by an action of the board or someone who was the treasurer. But I said, nothing significant about these. 23 audit, um, December 4th. 4th. I will be here with Sullivan Powers, the new manager, Ally, and I'm hoping that we can button it up. Everything that they have requested was sent to them in PDF, three, four months ago. And I've been inquiring, and finally I got them out of them to, to come and be here. So I hope that that can be buttoned up so that we can have a statement and an opinion. The audit's been completed.
Sometimes when it's not there.
It's just one of the paragraphs, the audit's complete.
Whatever.
So, yeah, that's, that's, you know, as I said, it's not a lot, we are, uh, we did quite well, we're only 243,000 dollars of principal left on the first payment for the current tax year, and we got just under 4 million to collect for the. We got just under four million to collect for the second payment. The school has been paid fifty percent. Highway's been given fifty percent. All of our operations have been paid fifty percent. So we're in good stead.
So you don't have, you don't see anything alarming that week?
No, no. And quite frankly, though, the staff here makes the bills, does the reports, all the reporting. I sit down and read the financials before I show up here and nothing stands out. I have, I'd still log on to online banking and still make sure that when the money comes through, identify what it is. Book the interest and reconciliation. The three main accounts are reconciled through October thirty-first. So I'm comfortable with what the numbers are saying. So you're in great stead. And now that you have a manager shortly, hopefully we can move even quicker than we got. So that's it for me. If you do have any questions. You can have my email account to write to and ask. Otherwise, I'll be starting whenever the managers go through the managers so that for information. The last topic we'll bring about financials is budget sessions. And I'm going to presume the last time that I worked with you folks, I gave you spreadsheets that were just line numbers. So everybody could just say, look at this line number and all of that. And so we'll repeat that exercise.
Great.
And probably the best thing is to start with whatever this year's budget is, repeat it into next year and then start talking. And you can look through line by line and say, this should go, this should go out. I know next year we are going to have a major election. And so we want to make sure that our election expense, we compensate for the employee changes in salaries, benefits, barriers we have to look at. I'm hoping the new manager can come in, hit the ground running with understanding budget process. And if so, I will load that so full. So it'd be great. And it'd be great having a full-time manager. Being able to assist you and work for the public and work for the staff. And I really want to trust my appreciation to Ally for all of her efforts in working with me throughout this process for you folks.
Thank you very much. Yes.
No problem. I got a lunch out of it.
That was a big lunch for that time of year, too.
Never come in on a Thursday when Alan run it is open. All right, well, get out of your way.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Again, congratulations.
We'll see you for the end of the month?
If you want to plan the twenty-ninth as a budget session, then we'll get prepped for a budget session on the twenty-ninth.
I like that idea.
And again, depending on the manager's experience, I may or may not need to be here.
I'll let you discuss it with one.
He can make the decision. All right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. See you.
Drive safe.
All right, moving on, we're good with the financial discussion.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to Beaver Deceiver Discussion. So as a board, we have already voted, made motions, voted approved installation of a Beaver, two Beaver Deceivers. There was a little bit of.
We did not.
Oh, we didn't. Oh, we only approved one? Sorry.
One on Henwood Hill.
Oh, for the.
Urges an installation of one on. We hadn't yet approved for the one in the backside of the marsh, the lower, that controls the level of the marsh on.
Brothers.
On actual land.
Okay.
I don't know why we would have any say over someone's private land, what we can do anymore.
Well, within that, we can spend money on their behalf.
Right, there had been discussion about placing a second one at that meeting. Sorry, I did not bring properly the minutes. About. If Tim Allen was okay with that, that it would come out of the highway budget, correct? Is that, am I remembering this correct?
I thought the Conservation Commission had received a grant for.
Yes, that was for one.
That's correct.
And then Chuck got approval to spend whatever on one for Henwood Hill.
No.
Or not. Just the opposite. The Conservation Commission is wanting to put one on Henwood Hill, call it a crossover. And we were going to take money out of the call and put one on the outlet and. Allen's mine.
And that's what keeps the marsh on from flooding the road.
Well, they're both going to have to work with each other throughout all the work because one side, yeah, exactly right. Keep the level from one side or the other. I have talked to every budding landowner, they all for it. I've gotten a permit from Wetlands. I've talked to Fish and Wildlife. I've talked into stream alteration. And I've got a permit to alter the level of the marsh up to two feet from its historic level, which is the invert of the existing vertical.
So.
But we don't have this permission from a private landowner.
Yes, all landowners.
Chuck has written.
Tim Allen.
He's getting.
ATG.
Okay, something has changed then because Tim, after that meeting, Tim called me wound tighter than the ten-day clock. But Dan wound tighter.
Right.
Greg called me wound tight. So I haven't heard anything since, so I don't.
Right. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't talk to.
Yeah, sorry.
I wouldn't talk to Tim. Tim wanted was, he wanted yours up for Wetlands. Tim has had a hard time.
No doubt.
From Wetlands, right.
Yeah.
So I got a permit from Wetlands, from Elizabeth. So I emailed that to him, forwarded that to him. He said, it's all I wanted. I don't even know how you did that, he said. He said, and it's all I wanted.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to tell you. We were trying to get from that.
So I went to Judd's and I explained to them what was going on. I went to Paul Harrowell, explained to him what we wanted to do, what was asked for his blessing. I didn't tell him is what we were doing. I made it clear that I wanted their input.
Do you have this stuff in writing?
So I've sent emails to all those people and I have yet to get any back because it just seems that, there it goes, but I have talked to all.
You guys have it linked in a file that they all put on, so if that's, it's not with communication.
At the end of the day, we've got a permit from the state owner that says we can do this.
And we need to go on to Tim Allen's land to put it in. Somebody, the contractor needs to go on to Tim Allen's.
No, well, we need to go through ATV's land, the truck company.
Oh, ATG.
Yeah, we should get, we should get something in writing for that.
Which we will have before we do anything. I've signed the email to them down there. They make, it's supposed to respond and the answer I got was, I'm done with it. But go ahead and do what you want to do. Well, yeah, I know that, but still. I had this fantasy, I was going to have all these emails before tonight.
Write something simple. And so we have it in file.
Well, that's what I did. I was trying to make it easier. I did all of that. Yeah, anyway. So that's where we're at.
Sounds good.
So do we want to wait till we have written permission?
Yes.
Yes.
From everybody's account?
Well, I don't know for you for everyone, but definitely for me, because we have to cross that property.
Right.
Otherwise, as long as we send a thing out and they haven't, you know, that was up to them to respond. They didn't respond, they didn't respond. We got to cross that property. We need to have something written in file.
So.
We don't want to approve the expenditure.
Until we have permission.
Pending permission. We want to get the permission worked.
Can we approve the one on the road that is in our right of way? So they can get started on that part.
I think that we already have.
Oh.
Well, yeah. You know, I will, I will see what I can do about getting that expedited.
I would think we could have.
Permission for the other part.
I think we did. Intention that we have that in writing.
Then it.
Then we don't have to, then Chuck just gets in writing, it's ready to go.
And we don't have to come back to this.
Right, exactly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm open to that.
I'll make the motion that we approve the Beaver Deceiver of ATG land. Pending, and the expenditure of the money on that pending a written permission from the landowner. And does this, this.
It's not on their land. We have to go through their.
It's on Tim's land.
Yeah, so the permission is across ATG's land to get to this.
Yes, I was saying, I was saying it's on Tim's land.
Yes.
So we need to get written permission.
So we need to get written permission from Tim.
Get written permission from Tim and ATG.
And I'll second that, Billy.
Thank you.
And when, we have that, the amount of ATG Beaver Deceiver does not exceed our purchasing policy bid spec. It's under ten thousand dollars and this is about five, right?
Second it.
So we won't have to run into a bleeding situation, just only one vendor, anyway.
Sure.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the installation and expenditure for a Beaver Deceiver to be placed on Tim Allen's property pending written permission and approval from ATG and Tim Allen. And we want to see a budding landowners.
No.
Okay, all right, all right. Allo in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
Thank you. I will forward that as soon as I get it, I'll forward the email to everybody so y'all have it at the same time.
As soon as we have that, go do it.
I don't think, I don't think we even need it downstairs.
Yeah, downstairs needs it. Yeah, just get it to the town manager.
You said written permission to Tim Allen, too, right?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to say something to my other one. Thank you very much for being this beautiful. It's been a long haul and going through a lot of avenues and talking to people and getting the state approval, so thank you very much.
No problem.
I appreciate it. Yeah, I'm part of that community of working group and, you know, trying to get people to live in compatible with you, so this is a good.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Planning Commission member discussion. So Stephen had asked at the last Select Board meeting if he could be, rather than Select Board alternate, if we could appoint him to be a member of the Planning Commission. So I reached out to VLCT and the response I got from Carl Andier, who is a staff attorney with VLCT, said that Select Board members can serve as full Planning Commission members, assuming that there's no town policy prohibiting such. And I am not aware of one myself. And look, I didn't see anything. If anybody knows of anything, please speak up. The only other thing would be if there were other potential conflicts, if he was, say, the zoning administrator or on the developmental new boards, that might be what he is not. So.
One thing you'd have to do is recuse yourself if the Planning Commission brought something to the board for approval or.
Oh, I see. Yes, 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 that when, when.
If that happened.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm not voting on approval of my own.
Correct.
Subcommittees' stuff.
Right, on your own town plan.
Yeah, that's very appropriate.
Plus with the.
Town plan, yeah. I mean, when the town plan comes forward, that would be that too.
Plus with our town manager, I'm curious if the next one, the prior research, if it's still that, maybe it's possible.
Do you want to make a motion to appoint?
If they come over, you know, we'll make.
So move, I'll move. So move, so move, motion to appoint Stephen Major as a interim member. A member of the Planning Commission.
I was like that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Allo in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Your abstaining.
Congratulations.
Where are you, where? I was going to meetings anyway. And then, and then they're online and I was assuming it was Monday and I went on Zoom, I sat there.
By yourself.
And then I looked at the date and it was actually July.
All right, moving on to the Putney Food Show. Thank you. I'm sure I have a memo that, oh, here, there's copies for everyone.
Okay.
Thank you. The question's out, it figures, the letter that I sent to the Select Board.
Thank you.
So the. The Putney Food Show has put together a petition asking to have a planning request put on the warning. Because a number of people from Westminster, the visits from households in Westminster are significant. I'll let you read this and then I'll give it back to you. Oh, sorry, you can't see all the files on the, on the, on the number of the Putney Food Show board.
It's basically saying that Westminster had. It's the third highest town in the utilization of Putney Food Show after Putney and Brattleboro, of course, we're much smaller than Brattleboro. And our utilization is higher than Dumbarton. And it was nine hundred and fifty-three, is that nine hundred and fifty-three? Households or household uses, like nine hundred and fifty-three times a household from Westminster came and bought food?
That is nine hundred and fifty-three times a household from Westminster.
Came and received food.
Yeah, so because we have been founded on the principle of reducing stigma and preserving human dignity, we do not ask for proof of residence or proof of income. Our mission states that anyone, that if a person comes to the food shelf looking for food, then they get it. So our numbers are duplicated, but a household is a household.
But it averages two point five eight people per household.
Yeah, so the household might be one or two people. It offices five or six. Okay. And not, the same households don't necessarily shop every week.
Yeah, right.
And twenty households were new to our food shelf in that year.
For the benefit of the fact, TBQ, tell us where it's located and what hour it's on.
Is housed in the Putney Community Center at Ten Christian Square in Putney, Vermont.
And when is it open?
It is open on Friday afternoons from one-thirty to three-thirty and Saturday mornings from nine AM to ten-thirty. And people are encouraged to shop once a week, not more than once a week. So if you come on Friday, then that's it. Please don't come on Saturday, too.
Is this something that we could add to a town meeting warning? That maybe we give other funds, other services around, you know what I mean?
That's what, this is a petition.
Oh, that's what it's asking.
Yes, that would save me having to get a hundred and thirty-seven signatures, which would be really great.
I interpreted it as you were looking for that right now.
I would love to look for it right now.
I'm sorry. I shouldn't read the whole thing before.
We can certainly bypass the petition process for her. That would be lovely.
As Select Board, we can, we can do that and put it on the one.
I'm certainly all for that. This is, what you do is incredibly important and spending time there appreciated. And thank you for being out there and making these efforts for those members of the community that desperately need your help. So all I have to say is thank you. I mean, a thousand percent support for this.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. We're very grateful because the numbers are increasing. Before the pandemic, it's not in the memo, but before the pandemic, this is your information, before the pandemic, Putney Food Show was serving about forty-five households a week. Putney Food Shelf was serving about 45 households a week. The past three weeks, we have served 180 households in a weekend. It's just.
May I ask one quick question, Nancy?
Yes.
Traditionally, this is something that's involved in New York City especially, that we would collect, you know, canned goods and everything else. Is that not something that's done anymore or?
It's not done the same way, the, because of the variety of materials that you get in that situation, we source most of our food from the Vermont Food Bank so that we can consistently get 100 of X and not three of this for that, one of those. And that seems to be the most efficient way to do it, yeah, so.
Consistency.
Yeah, consistency and quantity, similar thing. We also try to, try to buy from local vendors, local farmers as often as possible. We have a, we got a grant from Vermont, Vermonters Feeding Vermonters Grant to get winter greens, for example. So we buy from a local farmer who grows winter greens and that, that's been hugely important for our people who visit us.
Do you still accept, though, those, if that comes in, if someone showed up and said, you know, I've got, you know, a thousand bucks worth of, you know, stored canned food that's still good?
Yes.
You will take that?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This, I just, just doing a quick math, this request in this petition for $2,398, I believe with the servings served in Westminster, 2,460, comes to 97 cents a serving. That's pretty cool.
Really good.
That's really, yeah.
I do, but that's good.
How much did you figure out that you were requesting from the town?
$2,398. The way I figured it, I took, as you can see, the total number of households in, from Westminster is 17% of the total number of households that Putney Food Shelf served for the year. And so Putney, the townspeople of Putney give us a certain amount, and that's 31% of their share of the food cost. So I did the same thing for Westminster, took 17% of Westminster's share of the food cost and then 31% of that, because that's the same percentage of quantity as Putney gives us, 31% of their total. So that's how I figured it.
Do we need a motion to add this to? So move.
We have a question.
Yeah, Pauline? You're good.
Okay. No, I'm not questioning any of this. I'm questioning, because I support this, but I'm, I'm wondering if this is being presented as an article for the town vote? Or if this is, if this is something that the select board can just prove arbitrarily? But in my experience, it would be something that would be a petition, become an article to be voted on. That's my experience. So I'm, which I will support and I will absolutely assist with, but I, I, that's where I'm at as town clerk.
And so the select board can, can put a petition, I mean, to put an article on the town warning and petition drive can also put an article on the town warning. If we take action and vote here tonight to put this, this request as a, as a article.
As an article, okay.
It doesn't need to be a petition drive to do the same thing.
It would not need a petition drive?
Not need a petition drive. It is the select board who is choosing to put this as an article on the town meeting. And typically, when we do that, we're also essentially endorsing it as well as a.
Okay, I, that was just, that was a clarification that I needed. Thank you.
This would be that scenario where if we put it on three, if it's on three years in a row, it becomes part of.
The budget.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So move.
Thank you.
I just want to be clear, you are, wherever it says, you are.
Proven article.
For Putney Food Shelf of $2,398 as a contribution towards the cost of serving Westminster's, something like that is the, is the motion. Okay. Thank you.
Motion has been seconded, right? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? All right.
One, one thing I'll add to is because it's an article, there may be people at town meeting that would have a question about.
Oh, yes, yes, so.
So if somebody could be available, that would be helpful.
Yes, thank you, yes, that's a good reminder.
And your little information sheet put on the back of the, if people pick up information sheets about articles. So having a lot of copies of these on the back or something similar.
And on the back table?
Yeah, there's a, I move, we may, we may make trouble this year. Because we usually meet in the Bell's Falls Autory, which is closed.
Oh, right.
We don't actually have to cross that bridge, yeah?
We can just have our manager call, our people, our people call your people and figure it out. Everyone says it's happening, they'll break down.
That is something we've got to figure out, is where we.
We don't figure anything out.
So I, you're saying I should make copies of this to have available for voters and someone should be there to represent?
Yes, please. Yes, exactly, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work.
All right, so moving on to the Route 5 Bike-Chat survey. So the state, there's a printout in the packet that's, that's sent to me, the State of Vermont is working on a project. Essentially, they mentioned, the bike committee had kind of hinted at it at the last meeting, going from Canada through Vermont along Route 5. So I need to respond to this survey by the 17th. These, the questions that they've asked here, they mean, they want the planning commission to respond and the select board chair. So I would like.
What were they, did you respond?
Well, input if you want to provide any.
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to speak for you, Kevin.
I, I was, you guys heard me last time, I'm a good supporter, right, was that last year?
No, this is a different, this is, this is Route 5, this is.
This is a road.
Yep, different road.
This is a state, this is Route 5.
Got it. This is in front of your house.
Yeah.
Yeah, your house.
You're going to have a water stop at your house.
Good.
Give me one of these.
A little faucet.
Ten more miles.
I, I bike on Route 5, we're giving, I think it's a great idea.
I mean, I, I felt like I could answer these questions, but I honestly didn't want to answer them on behalf of everybody without the book.
Well, saving having each of us go through, get all, and give them all to you, I should just fill it out, hand them in.
You could do that.
Okay.
Yep.
You want a date served, what do you want?
Um, I need, I need to respond by the 17th, yeah. So.
We can give you these papers.
Yeah, so.
Okay, one on the 17th.
That's just over nine days.
So if you, if you all want to respond by next Wednesday, that'd be totally awesome. Good.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions about the survey? All right. Moving on to the town manager contract. So he has signed it, we have discussed it. More reasons to go into executive session, correct?
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the employment contract for Louis Burdo. Burdo has. Second.
Could I have stolen?
Yep. Do, hold on, I can't read it now.
Approve and sign.
B O U R D E A U X.
I'm sorry. B O U R D E A U X.
We're asking the town manager.
Approve and sign the employment contract. Louis, that's L O U I S.
Louis, yes, L O U I S.
Okay. Uh, that was Jason DeBose, a second, I'm sorry.
Seven.
Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded. No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. His first day is March.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pauline, for everything you've done here.
All right, that was awesome. Door Farming's report.
So we've been, well, we've continued with grading. We've been doing quite a lot of work on Melinda's Road. We've got permission to do a turnaround before the house on the top. There's been several times where we've had to back, bring a mile back down the road because President's toning up the area.
Don't be.
No, I'm not here. And so anyway, we came to an agreement, we were able to do the ditching, use that material to create a turnaround. And we finished that up today, we've got to finish building that. We just got word today that the Fullback Colored Estate is going to award us a grant, they're going to pay for 90% of that. We don't know yet what that's going to look like, whether it's going to be a box culvert or a bridge. Once we get the hydraulic study back and that's all confirmed, this was from the state engineer. Once everything's confirmed, then we'll figure out what it is that we're going to do. Years ago, there was a bridge there. Like that tells me that probably, as deep as that is and the way it is, I wouldn't be surprised if the state told us that that was the direction to go. Of course, a bridge ain't anything over 20 feet long. The maintenance is assisted by the state. So a box culvert is on us. A bridge, we get some help. So it's not, it's not a bad deal, it's a bridge there, well, not necessarily a bad thing, especially on a dirt road where it doesn't see salt. They tend to last longer. We're going to have it tonight, we're going to have a little weather, guys are going to come in tonight, they're going to pre-salt. So before you even start to see precipitation, we're going to help you now solve. Confuses people, like what the hell are they doing, idiots, no, it's not even raining yet. Well, we do. We're going to try to get ahead of it and get a little material down. So as soon as the freezing rain hits, it'll start to activate and keep it from closing over.
The road's warming up, so that it really won't.
The asphalt is not, the dirt road is not, but your asphalt is not. As soon as that cold rain hits the asphalt, it'll turn into a sheet ice.
Is there, are you using salts or that brine spray on stuff?
Uh, no. Well, we, we use salt because what we do is we use salt in the, we pre-treat our salt with chloride so it doesn't take as much salt to do the same job and it activates at lower temperatures. To do brine, it's just not feasible. I looked into it for us.
More equipment and stuff.
What's that?
You, you need different equipment.
Well, we need different equipment and to buy the brine is a lot more money, so it's.
Is there a competing byproduct, other than the brine that's used, a brewer's or something byproduct that's been?
Nothing that's as cost-effective or that works as well. I mean, they tried using Brewers Mash and all kinds of different things. We worked with a product for a while. That was maybe a sulfate, which was the byproduct of the papermaking process that came from trees. And none of it, we used twice as much, twice as often, and it cost a lot more money. At the end of the day, it wasn't even better for the environment. So we found that if we used less, we were out there less and it was more in parts as well, so. Until they come up with something better, I guess.
I do want to say on the road forming issues that the, I was pretty impressed with the level of communication with the landowner at Top of Language Road, that, that Helm Camp, who is, who is a, a seasonal landowner, a seasonal visitor. But that you caught him, which is hard to do, he's not up very often, and managed to arrange a very significant project in his front yard and with a favorable interaction with him. And I think, perhaps in contrast to our meeting, it was, uh, oh, that's, that's, that was good property owner communication to get that done.
Did you have a clarification question?
We have a grant for 90% of the work, but we don't know what the work is.
Correct.
And the state engineer has a name or no?
He does, Mark Pickering.
Thank you.
I think what we meant is we don't know the scope of the target, the scale of the.
Sure, we won't know until we get a hydraulic study back and that's when we're going to determine what we're going to do. The important thing is no matter what they decide, they're willing to pay for 90% of it, so. As ridiculous as it sounds, that was kind of a godsend that that happened because this is something that probably needed to be done anyway and is a beautiful way to fund it.
Any other questions for Chuck?
I just want to say that the road, the dirt road, the thing, I worked.
Thank you.
Really good, really clean, stuff, that rolling stuff. Everything doing there, material, yeah, the rolling, yeah.
Appreciate it. On that brings another comment, speaking about rolling, the roller is having some issues. It's got a check engine light and of course, we bought this roller with conjunction with Rockinham and we bought it from Nortrax. Nortrax is no longer a dealer for that roller. So the closest place is down by Boston to, they're going to have to come look at it, they're going to plug it into their computer. I've called Rockinham, they're going to pay for that because they haven't accounted that deal. Some dealers are going to come on, I ignore yours, you're on work.
The Nortrax is not a bone mechanism right now?
No. So it comes back as a little oil pressure, but it's really, that's not the issue, so. I'll keep you posted.
I would suggest you put a little piece of black paper.
That works really, well, the problem is, and that's, that's fine, the problem is it's D-rated. So the, whatever's going on there is serious enough so the computer has shut the engine down and it's not giving it full power and it's like, we're done.
And only get away with it for so long.
Exactly right, yeah.
We're classed big.
All right, moving on, we are not having an executive session, so we are, Kevin, this is your request.
Uh, yes, and thanks to a fellow board member. So recently, the Vermont State Ethics Commission is providing a series of interactions with the public, one has already been missed and one for all municipal officials. Um, and one for all municipal officials. This has to do with the establishment of the state, uh, Board of Ethics Commission, um, uh, by our, um, legislature in two thousand twenty-two. As I said briefly earlier, we were one of only four states, uh, without this and, uh, received the lowest grade, which was a failure in ethics in government. Um, I find this to be extremely, um, timely. And, um, they have set up two more interactive meetings and I would like the, um, the move board to authorize me for the following. November twenty-first, nine AM to eleven AM Eastern Standard Time, a remote Zoom, um, session we can set up uh, for all municipal officials elected or otherwise, uh, to interact and provide their comments uh, as to, um, what needs to be done in ethics in government. And, um, if, I'm not sure when the, uh, Gazette, um, publishes. Do we know?
The deadline is, for December is pretty close.
You know, Millie, what date would come out?
First of December.
Okay, so the, they will have a second, uh, a second interactive for everyone again, including members of the public on November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three from six thirty to eight thirty PM. I move to have the authorization, uh, to submit this notice, uh, behalf of the select board to the Gazette and also your permission, since I'm on all those other boards, to simply forward this out, um, notifying everyone that this is occurring and, uh, that they could participate in the upcoming events of the twenty-first.
So it's either on the twenty?
You could do the, uh, twenty, twenty-first is for, uh, select board people, uh, members of government, uh, but the twenty-eighth is for everybody, members of the public. And, uh, it really is, uh, worthwhile. And, uh, you certainly want to familiarize your, familiarize yourself, excuse me, with the state ethics commission because it's going to become incredibly important and powerful player in not just state government, but local government going forward. So I would like your permission to go ahead and craft something to send this out.
Would you like a more, yes? Well, ideally.
I don't know if I can make more than a reword all that. What do you, what do, what do we want to do?
Do you have permission?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to, uh, give permission to, Kevin Hughes to.
On behalf of the board.
On behalf, on behalf of the board to, uh, attend the municipal ethics.
Actually, all I want to do is send it out, all I want to do is send it out to the public so they're aware of it.
Okay.
And, uh, to all of you and everyone else in government, in our government, uh, because I'm on all these emails.
No.
Say yes.
To just put it out there to the public that these meetings are happening. That you guys agreed. Okay, great.
So I'll have to help you guys as soon as I did. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I think if you look in the Gazette, there's a, a column that says when the submissions are due.
Yes. I was just curious though, when it comes out? Because if the twenty-eighth is going to be the last day for, for the public, I'm not sure if it comes out by the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I was thinking it's probably close.
I was just going to say, if you want, send me an email if you want. I can put it on my Facebook page also.
That'd be great. Yeah, I'll send it to everybody.
So you'll send this out to all the boards?
I've got your email. I'll send it out to, I'll send it out to everybody. I've got most people's email.
All right, errors and omissions.
Ah.
Good at dogs.
I'm going to miss these.
I know. I'm going to miss having you done.
Okay, okay. We know you're not going to miss it. Okay, uh.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes.
Is Vermont scored F because we don't have the ethics, um, statute or whatever it is? Or because we've done something wrong?
Good question. Can I give you what the provided and I can give you the email too, so you see it real quick. That's a great question. It was conducted by the Center for Public Integrity for Governmental Ethics Enforcement and Accountability. Our General Assembly, um, because we were one of four states that did not have a statute online, uh, excuse me, statute that actually was accountable, felt that, yeah, we failed because we don't have not only a way to measure it, but also an actual standard by which to measure. So that's a fair question. And the fact that we got F might be simply because also that we didn't have a standard or a specific guideline on what we should be following.
We failed, failed by def- by definition of not having a commission. Uh, so if you define that as, as a failure, doesn't mean that the, uh, town government is, or the, the, the state government agencies are particularly unethical, um, or not. It just meant that there wasn't a commission. And it just came out in the news some time ago.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I, in no way, shape or form of, I, and if I did, I do apologize. I'm not in any way trying to insinuate toward that I'm impugning integrity of, of anyone in government. I just, uh, that this is now a very powerful commission and it's going to become more and more important. Not just at the state level, but it's going to come all the way down here.
Yeah, I remember when that came before, um, the legislature and, and the Senate in, in, uh, in Montclair and there was, there was actually back pressure about forming this, this ethics sta- new standards. That, oh, you know, we're still fine and, and, and I found that really interesting, but obviously they pushed through. But, um, what was, to propose to?
Well, to a certain extent, um, uh, i- if, if the press, you know, the, the press release is Vermont fails, but the definition is because it doesn't have a commission. Uh, it, it is, it is honestly insulting. Um, it, it, we're saying that Vermont fails in its ethics. By your definitions, it fails by your definition of not having an ethics board, um, as opposed to doing anything sinful. Uh. I, 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 I think that that's where the backlash came from, is, is a, a, a feeling of, uh, that it was somewhat entitled of those who were asking for ethics commission to infer that Vermont was a gigantic failure, I suppose with appropriate approach. If we say, let's do this so we can do better. That might be, would be much better received, but it, it came, came across as a hammer.
It's a misleading.
Um, uh, and anyway, but it's a good thing. There's no questions.
No well stated and not then, the bottom of the end. So the best way it was explained to me, which is really good, when the IRS passes a new law, whatever that is, your local accountants, they'll usually say, well, I'm going to need years to five years to actually see eh, what's an inch, what's a yard, what's three yards, what's too far? And by establishing this commission, as ethics even said, it's not a question of saying, well, you people, Vermont is a bunch, no, Vermont has too much unethical behavior. No, it's trying to establish an actual format by which you get there.
I understand that, yeah.
That's really good. I think it's really good.
It's really important.
It is. Thank you.
Arizona mission.
Okay. Uh, error and omission. Pursuant to, excuse me, today is, um, submission, um, Wednesday, November eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, pursuant to, uh, Article thirty-two, VSA S four two six one, correcting omissions from the grant list. Uh, New England Municipal Resource Center would like to submit the following parcels to the select board for approval. Uh, dated October fourth, two thousand twenty-three, parcel zero, zero, three, zero, nine, four, uh, dash, one, six, zero. Owner Hutchinson Kirk. Location, thirty Shady Pines Park. Current grant list value, five thousand nine hundred dollars. Reason for error and omission request, this unlanded mobile home was removed in July two thousand twenty-two. Respectfully submitted, Rachel Cohen, Leicester. Running on, just going for that one. Let me do them together. Okay. Uh, error and omission, uh, number two. Uh, submitted, uh, eleven eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, pursuant to, uh, Article thirty-two, VSA S four two six one. I corrected omissions for the grant list, submitted by New England Municipal Resources. Would like to submit the following parcels to the select board of Westminster Veritable. Parcel one, uh, zero, zero, seven, zero, eight, nine. Uh, new parcel to be created. Owner Westminster Back W Solar LLC. Location, Back Westminster Road on parcel zero, zero, seven, zero, eight, nine. Current grant list value, zero. Will be seven hundred, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and ten. Reason for E and O request, photo of all techs system was added to this land. Land only parcel. Parcel two. Dedication number zero, zero, eight, zero, four, three, dot, one, two. Owner. Farnsworth Roger I. Location Westminster Heights Road. Reason for E and O request, when this parcel was transferred to the town of Westminster, the current owner, two thousand eighteen. Tax status was not changed from exempt to taxable. Current grant list value, one hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. Respectfully submitted, Rachel Cohen, Leicester.
Didn't?
Sorry.
I can't find it, but didn't we just do the Shady Pines one?
I thought we did too.
Thank you.
Was it another Shady Pines thing?
Right.
Let's say one, yeah.
It could be. You could absolutely be, I'll go back and find it, but.
Yeah, make sure it's not.
It's, it's not a difficult thing. Mobile home wasn't there, right?
It was same reason.
Right. I think, yeah. I'll find it.
Are those on mo- that emotion there?
Yes, it is.
All submitted.
Okay, sorry, Jason.
No, no worries. I wasn't sure.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Is it possible that I can get a copy or how are you going to do it? How would you like me? You want me to?
Take a picture and send it.
Yep, that's exactly what I'm here.
And I'll look for the.
Boards, committees and commissions.
Oh, uh, I'll just, real quick, uh, so I'm on the, uh, win the solid waste commission, uh, which I've actually enjoyed. Just, um, I thought I would wait until our guy gets his feet in on his priorities, but I think by December, I should be handing that over to the, uh, our new, uh, manager, because traditionally that is a manager's post.
You were doing interim.
Yes, but I've enjoyed it thoroughly and learned a lot about, about it at least. Uh, but I just wanted to let everyone know that, uh, once he gets his other priorities done over there.
Then he's going to take care of government.
Take care of government. Quite great people matter. I guess that's why.
All right. Any other questions?
Uh, I do have one other question. I'm going to read something that I wrote from, so, so Westminster Institute has their hundred anniversary dedication of the building, uh, September of next year. And, um, I'll just, I'll read this. This is, this is also going to go in the Gazette. Hopefully on the town website, once we get some things straightened out, uh, anywhere else we can. Hello Westminster community, uh, in September of two thousand twenty-four, Westminster Institute will be celebrating its hundredth anniversary of the dedication of Westminster Institute. An informal committee has been formed to plan a dedication ceremony for mid-September, the fourteenth or the fifteenth. Uh, in conjunction with the ceremony, the committee is planning the first annual, hopefully, Westminster Community Festival. Our plan is to have a day-long event celebrating not only Westminster, Westminster Institute, but our great local artists, craft people, farmers, vendors, local nonprofit, community organizations. We're also hoping to have the Westminster Historical Society, First Congregational Church, and the Westminster Pride of Heaven participate with events coinciding with the festival. Especially, essentially a townwide festival celebrating not only the institute, but Westminster's long history of agriculture, cotton industry, intensive community that makes Westminster great. Here is where you commit. We're also, we are looking for interested folks to volunteer in all aspects of the event. We are also seeking interested local vendors, craft people, farmers, uh, businesses and local nonprofits that would be interested and participate. We are also looking for both individual and corporate sponsors to help cover things like trash, trash disposal bathrooms and other basic expenses. The committee is in the very beginning stages and is seeking public input to help make this a success. Interested folks in contact the following committee members for information, myself or the office email. And just, um, uh, there'll be some interested not conflict with the Westminster West. We, Community Fair, which is, which is the weekend after Labor Day. Correct. So just. We, we. Nope, we're trying to be conscious of all the things going around. Yeah, of course, the Putney Harvest Festival is off in, um, October, so that's out of the way. Um, but yeah, good time to get to that. That's all I have.
All right. Um, date of next meeting, we should, we would normally meet November twenty-second, but we've kind of.
No, sorry, sorry, thanks, Susan.
Yes, we have, oh, you weren't here for our little discussion. We were thinking of moving to Wednesday, November twenty-nine.
Oh, that's when, that's when.
The following week.
Budget thing is brought at that time.
Correct.
So move.
It wasn't an extra meeting, it was a move meeting.
It's a move meeting.
So we're just going to?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Next, twenty-nine.
November twenty-nine.
I saw.
Same time, same place. Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh-oh.
Oh, there's my right.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
It's right.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We're out.
Right.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two, four, six, three, one, six, one, three. Or email us at facteightten@gmail.com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.